Good evening and welcome to this evening's Fort Wayne Community School Board Meeting of Board Trustees. We begin this meeting, as we do every meeting, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And now we have roll call of members.
Good evening, Steve Carona from the 5th District.
Good evening, Julie Hollingsworth, District 1.
Hello, Jennifer Mathias, District 2.
Anne Duff, Member at Large.
Raleigh Booker, District 4.
Noah Smith, District 3.
Um, yes, sorry. To my left, we have Dr. Mark Daniel, Superintendent of Foreign Community Schools, and Angela Filler, Clerk of the Board, and I'm Maria Norman, Member at Large. So this evening, we begin with awards and recognition. Um, let's see. Let me get to where we're supposed to be. Oh, there we go. Okay. It is recommended that the Board... Make sure I'm on the right one. Allstate, yes. Okay. We have the Junior and High School Allstate Jazz Ensemble. It is recommended that the Board recognize Snyder High School students for participating in the Junior and High School Jazz Ensemble. The Indiana Jazz Educators Association is an organization that focuses on jazz education. As part of that mission, they hold auditions to create two jazz ensembles. The Junior Allstate Jazz Ensemble, which is open to 7th through 9th grade students, and the High School Allstate Jazz Ensemble, which is open to all high school students. Being selected for either of these ensembles is a tremendous accomplishment. Please come forward as your name is read so we may congratulate you. Luke Alsch... Uh, I hope I didn't butcher that. Junior Allstate Jazz Ensemble. Vince... Next, we have Vincent Hood, High School Allstate Jazz Ensemble. Brody Hirsch, High School Allstate Jazz Ensemble. We have Jordan Kane, Band Director, and Chad Hisong, Principal at Snyder. Yeah? Thank you. Next, we have the Indiana High School Dance Team Hall of Fame. It is recommended that the Board recognize Northrop High School teacher Lisa Helm... Is it Helmuth? Thank you. For being named into the Indiana High School Dance Team Association Hall of Fame. On Saturday, March 11th, 2023, Lisa was inducted into the Indiana High School Dance Team Association Hall of Fame. Lisa has been a part of the association since its conception and hosted the first competition in 1994 at Northrop High School. The Hall of Fame only has three other members, one of which is Lisa's father, so this is a family legacy. Lisa has worked 29 years to run the Northrop dance program and volunteer her time to be on the IHSDTA Board of Directors. She is here with Adam Swinford, Principal at Northrop High School.
You gotta get the little guy in the picture too now.
Aww. Aww. Yeah.
I wouldn't... If you wouldn't mind, I'm curious kind of about the history of your program and did you teach before 94? Were you recruited to teach the program or were you teaching before? I'm just curious.
I was hired in 92 to do the TV Productions Program, and I taught English. And I was there for two years, and the coach of... It was the Northrop Bruinettes at that time, and Nancy Schmeman was the person in charge. And they... Sue Bierman, I don't know if you remember Sue Bierman or not. She... They had built the dance studio, and she was so excited to get a dance program started, and they knew that I had a history of dance. I've done... I started when I was five and taught dance and everything. So she asked if I would be willing to take over the team and start the dance program. So I did. I took over. Actually, most people stop coaching when they have children, but I was nine months pregnant and started coaching. So my daughter back there, she was four weeks old at our first camp. So I took over the program. They called it... First, they had like music theater, dance styles and that, and it didn't go real well, and then they changed it to Dance 1, 2, and 3, and it just exploded. So for several years, I've had a full curriculum, Dance 1 through 5, and our team, we started competing the very first year. And we've been national champions twice, and we've been a state champion and state runner-up, I don't know how many times. But it's been... It's been awesome. It's been wonderful, and it's something that... It's just in you, and you just continue doing it. My daughter coaches with me, and I have two other assistants who've been with me for 10 years, and I have a great coaching staff. I love the kids. They love doing it, and it's a nice niche. Our performing arts at Northrop is incredibly strong, and I just think that's so wonderful that the kids have an area that they can go to and an outlet, and it's a place to be themselves. So... Did I answer your question?
Nice.
I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of hear the history of it, but congratulations on building such a great program.
Thank you. Thank you. I taught the TV Productions as long as I could, and then the program took over, and then TV Productions kind of got taken, you know, got downtown, and I mean, I love doing it. It's just been fun to go to work. So I've really enjoyed it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're gonna go a little off script. We are going to recognize a past School Board President. So we'd like to take this time to recognize Anne Duff for her role as the Board of Trustees' President for 2000... Or, sorry, 2021 and 2022. Anne?
Thank you.
Yes. We would like to present you with this award, and thank you for your time as President of the Board.
It's been a wonderful few years.
You can, because do we need a picture of this? Yes. Angie says yes.
You know, I don't think we voted on adding to the agenda.
Wow.
I don't know. It'd be sank.
It doesn't require a vote. So I think we're... I think we're okay. Just sit in there. I think it's my hand. Okay. Just hold it. Just then, we'll stand by you.
Some of them are yours.
Yeah. Oh, would you like to get in the picture? Yeah. Yeah. Everyone check for my camera. I guess the two of us. Slacker board members. Current president. I think that's a perfect thing to do. Okay. All right. No one kick your wires for your microphone. Apparently, that's the problem. Okay. All right. So now we are to our Consent Agenda, which is Approval of Minutes for a Regular Meeting from March 27th, Vouchers and Payroll, and the Personnel Report. Do we have a motion on the floor for those?
Ma'am Chair, I would move approval of the items listed under the Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Julie. Uh, Dr. Daniel, did you have anything that you wanted to talk about?
Well, we heard today in huddle, one thing that I think bears some recognition. So I see Renee there, Renee Sloan from Sedexo. So Renee, you have some good news, right? What's happening in our... In our space as far as personnel? Yeah?
Thanks to your approval of our new contract, we are, I think, 90-some percent filled. All of our day positions are currently filled. Now, that could change in an hour, because I've said that before, that we were totally filled, and then the next day, we were not. But we have had a remarkable traffic. I think we hit the sweet spot. I don't think we're over or under, and so we're just thrilled that we now feel like we can go back to progressing and getting better.
Can you talk a minute while you're up there, Renee? Last week, I was at an honors award banquet for the Snyder schools, and one of our top 10 students, Mr. Timothy Schwantz, or Shantz, I can't remember his name, is working for you. My daughter mentioned today a number of the kids there that she knows are working there with you at Sedexo at Snyder. How's that program working?
Yeah, that program has been phenomenal. It saved us, quite frankly, and so I think we have five... I'm getting confused with Kiwanis. I have five seniors. So I think it might be 10 seniors, but each high school has some students that are working in it that aren't graduating. Several have been here since we started hiring, and we continually have more people onboarding. So I think it's just fabulous. They've been great. We've had to terminate a couple, but not very many, so it's been a great program. So thank you.
What's the minimum age for that? What's the minimum age?
We lowered our minimum age to 16.
Okay.
So now we have our night supervisors back supervising, so it's all... It's all working out. So thank you.
Do you have any kids in the outside of the high schools, like in the elementary or middle school?
Yes, we do, because when high schools get full, because we try not to have too many positions there, because we have to be extremely flexible with them so that they can attend their other activities. So when those are full at that high school, we see what's around and if they have transportation and if they can get there. So we have a couple people that...
How can a student find out about it? Or how do they find out about the positions?
Well, in the beginning, I think it's word of mouth now. We do go to the counselors, and we let them know what we have. And I don't know that kind of... Maybe I need to get another flyer out to the counselors, but we have not had a stoppage of applications from students, so.
How many hours do they work every day?
Four. We try not to keep them too late, so they come about 4, which will change next year, and stay until about 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will any of the students that are working currently during the school year continue to work throughout the summer?
Yes. Mm-hmm. And I think we have three students that graduated last year and stayed with us.
Wonderful.
So that was great. So it's been great. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Renee. Thanks, Renee. All right. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. We have no old business, so we're moving on to new business. Steve, are you able to take?
I am able.
Thank you.
Are you willing?
I am willing and able. It is recommended that the Board approve a trip to Europe for Northrop High School students in June of 2024. Students will experience educational opportunities as well as the culture of a country. Students in grades 10 through 12 will have an opportunity, this sounds terrific, to visit London, Paris, Madrid, and Barcelona, two weeks, June 10th to the 25th. That's again, next year. They'll be accompanied by a visual art teacher, John Platt, and family and consumer science teacher, Karen Brumba, along with several chaperoning parents. Students will be able to experience airplane and train travel. Some of the expert-led excursions will include seeing London's Big Ben, the House of Parliament there, Paris's Arc de Trappe, Madrid's Puerta del Sol, and Barcelona's La Sagrada Familia. That's one heck of a trip. And Mr. Platt and Ms. Brumba are here to answer questions and whether you would like to be with them.
Right.
Isn't that what you're gonna talk about?
Is there a motion?
Move approved.
Second. Thank you. Noah and Raleigh? Yes.
So what's the cost of the trip, in case I want to go?
The cost is gonna be around $5,000. We're gonna do a lot of fundraising, so I don't want it to... The cost to be a barrier to any student who is able and want to go.
And what company will you be traveling with?
EF Tours.
And how will you get from... I assume there... That's in order of the cities, so how will you get from Paris to Madrid?
I believe we have to fly on a plane. So there's a couple of train travel and then flights that we're gonna take.
How many students are you able to take on a trip like this?
For every six students, we have to have one chaperone, so I'm... Ideally, I would say about 18.
Well, we'll take as many as we can get.
Yeah.
Well, if you need additional chaperones, let me know. Okay. Any other question? Anything?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there a particular reason why you selected this circle of cities to visit?
I want to give the students the experience of going to all the places that were mentioned, especially the Louvre and the La Sagrada Familia. So I mean, that's kind of my goal there is to make sure we... If we're gonna go, to encompass all those places, so just not limiting it to those... You know, I don't want to limit it, but if we're gonna go, I want to go to all those places.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you. Thanks for providing this opportunity for our students.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, are you willing and able to do a new business?
Certainly can. This is for each Expanding Access to Critical Mental Health Supports Grant. It's recommended that the Board approve the acceptance of a five-year grant from '23 to '27 from the U.S. Department of Education for each for the amount of $9,939,799. The each grant will support expanding our mental health capacity by providing training to many subgroups. Those include elementary therapists, middle and high school counselors. Fort Wayne Community Schools is in partnership with Purdue University, Fort Wayne, and Indiana University, Fort Wayne, will build capacity to increase the number of school-based mental health services. And Ms. Reagan Frye is the Project Director of this competitive grant and is available to answer any questions with support from Melissa Richards.
Thanks, Julie. Is there a motion on the floor?
No motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Anne. Questions?
Do we have yet to apply for this grant?
We have applied, and it... We have been awarded, but we need the Board approval to move forward.
Okay. And then when it says we will provide training to many subgroups, what... Are we looking to hire people on this, or are we looking to contract out with people on this?
So the partnerships with both of the universities, that is going to be based on building capacity and having paid internships within our secondary schools. That's where we lack the most mental health support. So it's partnering with both the master's program with PFW and IU School of Social Work, and so through those, we'll obtain approximately 5 to 15 from each program per year, and those will be able to be interns that are within middle and high school so that each school has mental health support.
So this is almost $10 million. I mean, this is huge.
It is huge.
Why didn't you bring champagne? I mean, this is...
I know. It's weighing heavy on me, let me tell you. I did have a celebration, but now I need to wait for the celebration until after it's approved for...
This is awfully exciting, given, you know, what students are going through these days, and I was at a meeting at Northside High School a couple of weeks ago with 25 Latino students, and two of them broke down about the struggles that they are faced in their lives, and I've got to believe that that is multiplied many times over in all of our buildings. So to receive this type of money to support that service for students is just gigantic. Were you helpful in writing this proposal? Did you have a role or...
Yes.
Congratulations.
I've been... Thank you. I've been working on that for about seven years, wanting to get them in secondary, so it's an exciting opportunity.
Sure is.
So this will basically pay the interns a wage while they're required to work for their degree, but also attracting and trying to recruit them to here to...
Correct. And then having retention after that as well?
That'll be the whole...
So with that paid internship, then there would be the retention piece of the commitment for their partnership with us, and to be employed then after would be the end goal.
So if I'm a student next year, or at IU in this program, and I have one more year to go to do an internship, I could come in, you would pay me through this grant, and then I could also obtain a job with the district and get paid through this grant?
Those would be... Yeah, those would be the goals. This would be renewable after the five years. At this... It would be... You'd have to apply, of course, but they're stating that the funding will be there, so it's building the capacity and then identifying how to support that growth and how to hire within, and when you have those partnerships, to be able to fully have that well-rounded program, because both partner... Or we have MOUs with both IU and Purdue, so they're on board. They've already submitted for the grant. They have that submitted to that they would work with us, so they're already on board to do this.
So you said 5 to 15 per year. Let's say we... Obviously, you've been awarded to be through this tonight. What's your vision? Like, fall of '23, we have how many do you think?
That means this summer that we could start. So as far... As soon as this is approved, we aren't able to spend anything until it's approved.
How many do you think if you attract for the fall of '23 then?
At least, we have at least five that are interested without any funding, so the fact that it's a paid internship is not something that has been done.
Presented to them?
Yeah, it hasn't been done. I mean, even... I went through that program, so 2008, there hasn't been anything where it's been a paid internship, and it's a competitive pay scale as well.
So are there any other school districts like us in the area?
No, not at this time.
So we'll be able to offer paid internships, whereas East Allen County, let's say, are peer to the right, can't do that?
That's great.
Is there enough demand or capacity that we could branch out to more than just these two universities, or do we...
There is the opportunity, so that would be a potential...
We're not restricted by the...
No, we aren't restricted.
Approximately, how many students do you think are in that program right now or currently? And then in the future?
They have about 15 a year for each of those, per cohort. So the IU School of Social Work does some of their work in Indianapolis, so when they do their internship, though, they're still trying to do that back in Fort Wayne.
So in theory, you know, five, by the end of this grant, we have 25 folks, A, they've gone through the program, and B, 20 that are employed in the district.
That's great. This is super exciting.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
You said you've been around it seven years. You've tried before, then get the competitive part, or...
I've been... Well, I was in the elementary before this, and so as I see even every time as you were talking, Steve, when I see kids now in high school, they are asking for that, like, oh, I wish we had a therapist here, or I wish... And I just had a meeting last week where students, my old students that are now, they're like, oh, I feel like some of us kind of drifted off. We need somebody. So they have the potential to reach out. I think that's amazing that kids are reaching out for help, and then just building that capacity of how do we have the funding to sustain it overall, because those are a lot of positions.
So is this the first year you applied? So you've had this idea, I guess, for seven years? I was thinking you applied for seven years.
Yes, no, I haven't applied before. It's just been the opportunity to be able to move forward with it.
And then brag on us a little bit, please. What do you think about your application that stood out to get this then?
The paid internship is huge, and then also, another huge piece that is within this is those current staff that we have would have the opportunity to go back to school, have schooling paid for, to receive their masters in counseling or therapy. So have any of the behavioral health boards. So that's any... And it goes over highly effective, so if they're highly effective and someone has interest, because these are night programs, then it would pay for tuition, it could pay for childcare, it could pay for travel expenses with mileage. So there's a lot of perks that are within this that are innovative, that haven't been done before.
That's great.
Can I add to this?
Absolutely.
Reagan has... She's being pretty modest. She is the one and only standing mental health counselor that we've had in the district for seven years, eight years?
Eight now.
Eight years. She was in... Came to us in a grant where we only had three, that we'd get a pilot in elementary school, and she has stayed with us. And so, how many years now? Two? Three?
In this position?
Yes. One, sorry.
I know, you're adding years to it.
I've just seen her, known her for so long, but she was graciously willing to step into a district position and now oversees all mental health counselors in our district. And so this dovetails real nicely with what we're talking about, how we add in secondary, because we will have a cadre of people ready to step into positions who have had an opportunity to have internships within our district and get to know us as we think about how we expand into secondary schools. But she has done a phenomenal job since she's been here in this one year, and continues to support all of our mental health people with their PL currently. This just gives her more dollars to do that on a broader scale.
That's great.
Reagan, I'm proud of what you did, and I'm thankful, because as a mother of... Well, I have two adult children now, but teenage children who recently have been through high school, I know the importance that those kids are struggling, even children who are supported, struggle.
Absolutely.
And I know it's hard to find those supports, and if we can at all help our students where they're at most of their day, know that there's someone for them, I think that's wonderful, and thank you.
Me too. Thank you.
So sorry, one more question, a lot of questions, but how would... If you can get five next year, would you roll it out one per high school then, or how...
What was your question? I didn't get that.
If you were able to get five next fall, would you roll it out one per high school and then kind of...
We would go based on the highest need that's listed within the grant document, so it's going over poverty rate, and so those would be the first pieces, the first schools that we would go to.
So if you were able to get five, for example, next year, say, Northside might get two, and Wayne none, or Snyder none, and...
It would primarily look at doing one per school initially, and then scale from that point.
Okay. Thanks for that, Claire.
So can they still cross? If we found the need at one of those schools, can those students access, if we did have a provider at another school? Could they access that provider at another school?
Potentially.
So...
Potentially. Yes, there is a potential for that. It just, with the scheduling, so the therapist would be able to go to other schools to be able to serve that need. It's amazing the need that you see. Even with an elementary school of approximately 400, I felt there could be two therapists. And so looking at that, and it was a higher need school. So it's just looking at how much need. Because what this is, you're looking at 1 to 250 as the goal for mental health too, as far as the state or the nation standard, 1 to 250. And in our high schools, for mental health, it's 1 to over 2,000, almost 3,000. So that's where, even at one high school, one person, you would want multiple eventually.
Absolutely. Okay.
Sorry, I lied. Do you contemplate going into AMPLAB or ANTIUS at all? If you can reach that critical scale?
If it goes to scale, that would be an opportunity. There isn't anything that excludes any of our schools. There's a few that do not fit the criteria based on, and they're four elementary schools, though.
I'm done now, for sure.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jennifer, can you take the next one?
It is recommended that the board purchase a Microsoft Enrollment Education Solutions, EES, license agreement from Bell Technologics of Indianapolis in the amount of $184,914.01. This annual purchase provides Microsoft Windows and Office licenses for all district-owned devices. The EES license also includes many of the core data-centered products such as a server, operating systems, and desktop management tools. This license also allows students and most staff to download Microsoft Office up to five personal devices at no cost. Since pricing is set by Microsoft and not the reseller, Indiana law allows for the purchase of software programs without a bid. Funding will come from their operations fund. And Jack Bird, our Chief Systems Operate Officer, excuse me, will be available to answer questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor?
No move.
Thanks, Anne.
Okay.
Thanks, Noah. Any questions for Jack? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anne, can you do the next one?
It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of Chromebooks from Trafara of St. Paul, Minnesota for $2,736,591 and various Lenovo computer models from Prosys of Indianapolis for $585,003.54. The amounts and costs are broken down for you to see. The purchase of these laptops represents the third purchase for the 23-24 school year and will complete the K5 conversion from Microsoft Windows-based computers to Chromebooks and includes replacement teacher and sixth through 12th grade student laptops. This purchase also includes devices for New Tech Wayne and the Kelly Innovative Center. These replacement devices are part of our normal four-year replacement schedule. FWCS was able to secure pricing from Trafara for the Lenovo Chromebooks. That is 31.5% below the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance pricing. FWCS was also able to secure pricing from Prosys. That is an average 53.6% below General Services Administration pricing. Indiana law does not require public bidding for purchases made at or below approved corporate purchasing agencies and/or GSA pricing. Funding will come from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, or ESER, grant, and the Common School Fund loan. Jack Bird, Chief Systems Officer, will be available to answer your questions.
Thanks, Anne. Is there a motion on the floor?
No move.
Second.
Thanks, Anne. Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Jack?
We're putting 426 computers at the Kelly Innovation Center? 426. It says quantity 426 Lenovo, 500 WG3, 6 through 8 Kelly Innovation Center. Cost of $183,000.
It's grade six through eight. And the Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarity.
No problem.
Great answer, Jack. Good job.
Thanks, Maria.
I think I answered because I thought the same thing. And then I was like, oh, wait, okay. Any other questions? Yay, laptops. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It is recommended that the board approve the First Contract Amendment with Wigan Construction Company as part of the Construction Manager as Constructor, CMC, contract for the renovation of Blackhawk Middle School, previously approved on January 23rd. This represents the first amendment of two. There were bid packages for rooftop equipment, electrical gear, and panel boards. Total amount comes to $691,722. The project consists of architectural, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical renovations to Blackhawk Middle School. The contract procurement method for these projects is the CMC for publicly funded projects as allowable per Indiana Code 5-32. This amendment represents early equipment purchases to ensure delivery of long lead times items. An additional recommendation will be presented later, at a later date with the establishment of the final guaranteed minimum, or sorry, maximum price for the project. The project will be funded from the 2020 School Building Basic Renewal Restoration and Safety Project. And Darren Hess is here to answer any questions. Is there a motion on the floor?
No move. Second.
Thanks, Anne. Thanks, Jennifer. Any questions for Darren?
Darren, we've been talking of various different projects. Help me understand what these panel boards are versus other panel boards we've been talking about.
So these are the main electrical gear coming in to upgrade the service, but then all the distribution panels throughout the building. Those are more custom and not just off the shelf. So you have to order those early to get them delivered so that we're ready. Once we start recircuiting the building, we have the new panel boards in place.
At this point in time, based on scheduling and such, when do you think Blackhawk could start with the renovation?
We're looking at Christmas of '23, Christmas break.
And how long is that project projected?
It'll be complete roughly fall of '25. Yeah.
Fall of '25? Thanks.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Raleigh, can you do the next one?
It is recommended that the board approve the following construction contracts for ESER ventilation projects. Brentwood, North Prest, and Northwood, 2023. Direct sheet metal with a base bid of $234,883. That's the total contract. There was one alternate that was not accepted. Automated logic control base bid for a total contract of $154,100. Fairfield, Maplewood, and Washington, 2023. Direct sheet metal, base bid $228,832, which was the total contract. There was one alternate that was not accepted. Automated logic control base bid $86,750. That was the total contract. This project consists of ventilation improvements and exhaust fan replacements at the above-named buildings. Primary engineering design the project. The project will be funded by the ESER grant. The existing building automation systems and controls are proprietary. And automated logic is the single-source vendor for this work. And Darren can answer any questions.
Thanks, Raleigh. Is there a motion on the floor?
No move.
Thanks, Anne.
Second.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any questions for Darren? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noah, can you do the HVAC equipment?
Sure. It is recommended the board approve the purchase of HVAC equipment from Four Bunch Early Childhood Center from Correct Air of Indianapolis, Indiana, for $608,299. The purchase will provide five existing custom multi-zone HVAC air handlers for the building. The equipment is being pre-purchased now. It will be assigned to an HVAC contractor at a later date. Correct Air is the area's authorized dealer for these custom units. Seasons-4 is the only remaining manufacturer of these type of multi-zone air handling units and are best suited to fit the existing conditions without major rework to the existing HVAC distribution system. The project will be funded from the ESER grant. Darren is still here to answer questions.
Thanks, Noah. Is there a motion on the floor?
No move. Second.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Julie. Any questions for Darren?
I guess just a general one. Darren, you mentioned earlier that you're still having some challenges getting some equipment and some of these items like this. I presume we're looking to order now so we can be ready. How's it, the general market conditions?
Improving. We have to be a little more careful about how we specify so that we're not specifying something really unique because those fall in the very bottom back of the line for the production schedules. So unfortunately, we're having to make some concessions, but they're educated concessions of, to be able to get something in time. Because the ESER dollars, when they go away, they go away. So this one in particular, the existing manufacturer, these are custom-built to our specifications 20 years ago. They still have the plans and specifications on them, so they're just recreating them. Where if we didn't go with this manufacturer, we'd have to recreate the entire process. So we're saving time by going with them direct and they can just put us right in the production schedule.
So help me understand, make sure I'm clear. If we order with ESER dollars today, but we, we haven't ordered and committed, but it comes in after our deadline, what's ESER 1's, this, end of this year? Is that right?
ESER 2 is this year and ESER 3, which these are going to be funded out of, is next fall.
So let's say this was ESER 2 as an example, and it doesn't come until physically January, we're kind of in trouble. Are we out of luck on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a reimbursable grant, so we'd have to find
So we don't have to, we have to receive the product and then
Yep. Have to have invoice and pay it.
Thanks for that clarity.
Other question?
Do you have any trepidation about ordering from a company that is the only one in business that, anymore?
They're a very reputable company still. It's just, it's a different style of design.
Right, right. I understand.
If I built a new building, I wouldn't do it this way. But because of the, I mean, Bunch is not that old. It can withstand another replacement before the next 20 years.
I was just going to ask you then, what's the life of the?
Yeah. In 20 years, we would redo the distribution. Because at that time, the duct work is out of lifespan, of lifespan too, so.
All right. Any others? Thanks, Darren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next up, we have auditorium seating and locker replacement for Wayne High School. Steve, are you okay to do that?
It's recommended the board approve the following construction contracts for Wayne High School. There's two for auditorium seat replacement in the amount of $176,589. Recommended company to do business with is Irwin Seating Company. And then for student, academic, and athletic lockers, it's recommended that we award a contract to DeBerg Manufacturing Company in the amount of $1,023,874.97. The replacement of the fixed audience seating in the auditorium in the lockers at Wayne was strategically procured separately from the base construction project. And that was due to the unique nature of the work to be completed. The recommendation is within the program budget and funding from the 2020 School Basic Renewal Restoration and Safety Project funds. The seating proposals were obtained via a public request for proposals with five potential bidders requesting documents. And only one proposal, however, received from those folks. The project for the lockers was designed and procured through Sourcewell National Purchasing Co-op. State law allows for purchases made through competitively bid contracts from approval, from approved, rather, cooperative purchasing entities. And Darren is still here to talk about these with us.
Thanks, Steve. Is there a motion on the floor?
I move for approval. Second.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, Jennifer. Any questions for Darren?
We'll just take it through the last one, Darren. Good job. No questions. Proud of you for hanging in there.
Bleachers in school colors, like Snyder?
The lockers?
Oh, I miss red. Yeah, lockers.
Honestly, I don't know what color we selected, so I couldn't answer that. Carolina blue and I can't remember what the red, technical red color is. I don't know.
Do you know how many lockers in total that is? I'm surprised you don't have that in your file folder. I expected you to just
It's between 1,500 and 2,000. I know that.
Okay. Cool. Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Darren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Julie, did you want to do gifts, grants, and donations?
It's recommended that the attached list of gifts, grants, and donations be officially accepted by the board. Throughout the school year, various schools receive gifts and donations from individuals, organization, and businesses. Authorization to receive gifts is a board function. The State Board of Accounts has agreed to a listing of all gifts received during any one year and ratified the board would meet audit requirements. So attached, board members have gotten a list of all the gifts, grants, and donations that were submitted by various school unit heads for 2022. Eight detailed reporters on file in the business office. Unit heads are encouraged to express appropriate appreciation for any and all gifts received. And Kathy Friend, Chief Financial Officer, is available to answer questions.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No move.
Thanks, Anne.
Second.
Thanks, Raleigh. Any questions for Kathy?
I don't have any questions, but when I was looking through the list, you know, it says individuals, and a lot of those individuals, I recognize names as parents. So it's just great to see a lot of parents helping. And parents would include, you know, PTAs, because there was a lot of PTAs listed on there. Lots of churches, lots of our regular supporters, like the SIRAC Foundation was on there. I can't remember because it was a while ago that I read. But, but, you know, we greatly appreciate it. And I'm sure our students greatly appreciate it because we would not be able to do a lot of these co-curricular activities without these, these donations. So it just makes a huge difference for our kids to get that well-rounded education during the day and after the day because of all these contributions from people in our community who appreciate foreign community schools. And
And I think, if I remember correctly, Kathy, wasn't it just south of like $900,000 total?
Yeah.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah. I saw on the, on the list, I don't know if you all read in depth, as in-depth as I did, but I saw that a church paid the difference so that any student that wanted to get a book from the book fair could get a book so that nobody had to go without because they didn't have the means to get a book. And I just thought that was the sweetest thing ever. But yes, just south of $900,000, PTAs, community partners, churches. We just want to say thank you for all the support that you give our staff and students in our buildings. We couldn't do this without you. Any specific questions for Kathy? Awesome. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jennifer, did you want to do the next one?
It is recommended that the attached report, which we received, of equipment purchases be officially accepted by the board. Equipment purchases, including equipment reconditioning over $500 from extracurricular funds are subject to approval by the Board of School Trustees. The State Board of Accounts has agreed that these purchases and reconditioning may be accepted annually. Attached is the report, which we received, and Kathy is here to answer our questions.
Thanks. Is there a motion on the floor?
No move.
Thanks, Anne. Thanks, Raleigh, for that second. Any questions for Kathy? All those in favor?
Aye.
So that is the end of our new business. And that leads us to reports and information. So this evening, we have the FWCS Student Internship Report. The video will be shown with Shanita Bolton. A video will be shown with Shanita Bolton, Director of the K-12 College and Career Readiness, Sandy Adams, Assistant Principal of the FWCS Career Academy, and Amelia Fleeger, High Ability Advanced Courses and Internship Manager, sharing FWCS internal and external internship opportunities and the ways students gain real-world experience, explore potential career paths and learn workplace skills. Ms. Bolton and Ms. Adams will be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Good evening, President Norman and to the board. We're honored to stand before you this evening to share with you internship opportunities and the ways that it impacts our students across the district. During this presentation, we will share with you a brief video that will highlight a few of our student interns, provide you with a comprehensive view of internship opportunities, establish partnerships across Allen County, career academy opportunities and meaningful experiences, internship progressions leading to employment and college and career readiness internships. And at this time, we'll show you a video.
This is a new program, and I honestly did not know that much about it at the beginning of the year. From what I understand, students can talk to their counselors to bounce around ideas and they can apply anytime at Naviance, the college and career readiness platform that we've been using as a district. If there's an internship available, they'll be matched up and hopefully placed in a position that they're excited about being placed into.
I've always had a drive to work and I've always, always liked to be really efficient. So when I found out that I could be a student and have a possible internship while in school and be able to learn more and further my career, I pretty much jumped on the ball and really just wanted to take advantage of this opportunity that I had.
To be honest, I think the most important thing has been problem solving. When you have a problem, when you have an issue, it helps a lot to do this job because it basically, it helps you think, I'll take the box and find a solution to problems you have.
This internship was the first step in my journey in the medical field. I'm attending college this upcoming academic year. I'm majoring in pre-med in neuroscience.
I've definitely learned how to create personal and work relationships. I've learned what it's like to be in an actual work environment. On a deeper level, I've learned a lot about myself and the things that I enjoy doing.
Our focus is to provide them with resources that they wouldn't otherwise have. And we'd really like to focus on kids from parts of the country, parts of the city that are, don't really have as many advantages as elsewhere.
I would absolutely want to have more Fort Wayne Community School students as interns. I could have saved myself a lot of time if I had had an opportunity like this in high school.
You could either find out that you hate it and you don't want to do it, or you really find what you love and you're able to use that and help you start that college career because college is a lot different atmosphere than it is high school.
One of the best parts of my job is watching my students grow and develop throughout the year. And I've got to have that same experience with my intern. When she came in at the beginning of the year, she was really quiet and shy.
My neighbors keep stars. I'll go to store. My neighbors say I want to play soccer too. Because I thought everybody is failed to even look what they got. So they, so they that they can't do this for they.
She's been able to experience other classrooms. And just watching her now, she just seems so much more at ease. And it seems like she's happy doing what she's doing. So it gives me hope that maybe she'll stick with education and maybe she'll be a colleague someday in the future.
I think one thing we give them is a connection. Young people that maybe don't necessarily want to stay in Fort Wayne, when they are home visiting, they remember their times with us. We've had students give feedback about our situation, helping them with self-confidence.
As a senior, I've worked multiple jobs, but I feel like having this student internship experience during school kind of made it more realistic. And I feel like you're able to fit in with a nine-to-five kind of lifestyle, learn from a more practical standpoint instead of just a classroom setting.
You don't understand what you're getting into if you don't have experience in it. So having this intern opportunity for our students is going to give them an advantage. And hopefully, it will keep growth in our community. I know that's been a big focus of the district is staying in our community and building things here.
This baby, look what the teacher, and I think it's true. And that what should as well.
I very much enjoy the internship now and I'm looking forward to moving full-time and continuing my career and furthering myself.
So I'm very excited for the future of this internship program. I think it'll bring good things to our district.
Hope you enjoyed that video. So as I shared, we are going to share a comprehensive view with you, first of all. Fort Wayne Community Schools, as we work with students in the internship program, we are providing high school students not only with an opportunity to engage with businesses and corporations, organizations, but to have true experiential learning opportunities. We want to work to make sure that they are having a true, meaningful and practical work experience where they are building that set of skills, gaining knowledge and having the abilities to succeed post-secondary. Few benefits of being a student intern. This is an invaluable experience for students, a meaningful experience. Also, as I shared, gaining the knowledge, skills and abilities, and most importantly professionalism so that they are prepared to go into the workforce. This provides them with a hands-on experience, not just filing paper, but actually experience what they would do in that particular career field. Also valuable connections and contacts across Allen County as they engage in these wonderful experiences. And last but not least, a potential for the internship to become full-time employment. For our employers, the benefits of having a student intern, they are developing a talent pipeline. As many of you have heard, across Allen County, there are positions that there is more demand than they are individual, individuals, excuse me. So we're working to make sure that we are developing a pipeline with our students. They are gaining new ideas and perspectives, particularly for those businesses and organizations that have more seasoned staff. This brings a young, new perspective to the table. They help mentor and guide our students. Also, this is internship in lieu of part-time jobs. Students can participate both in unpaid and paid positions. Also, for the employer, they're gaining new connections and contacts because through a student, they're gaining even more contacts across our district. And then last but not least here, students are eager for the experience. One of the things that we find is students who are interested in internships do well because they are seeking out that experience. There are four ways across our district in which students encounter internships. That's through our career academies, through our pre-K college and career readiness, through our cooperative education courses, soon-to-be internships through AMP Lab. And the fifth that I didn't mention and didn't list in the four is student connections. We realize that students, because of the connections their family may have, friends may have, other connections through youth-serving organizations, they have been connected to an internship opportunity. During our first semester, and we'll get in more detail here in a second, we did have 132 students participating in some sort of internship experience across our offerings. During our second semester, that increased to 202 students. There are a few of those that are duplicates from the first semester, but we do have many that are unique experiences for the students' second semester. As to date, right now, Fort Wayne Community Schools through these areas, we have partnerships with over 150 businesses and organizations across Allen County. And that continues to grow each day as we are reaching out to them, but also receiving many phone calls and emails. These are some of our top internship employers that are hiring our students. I won't go through this list, but allow you just to take a second to glance through it. And at this time, I am going to turn it over to Sandy Adams, Assistant Principal from Career Academies at the AMPS.
Thank you for allowing us to present to you. This is one of my absolute favorite topics in all of education. And at the Career Academy, I'm fortunate enough to have been here eight years ago when we decided to start high school internships. We started with IT program students. We had nine and we found nine employers. And we had this wonderful pilot year where we were able to put programming students into several different industries. And I'm really happy to tell you that from there, eight years later, we have had 223 of our students have some form, whether it's a practical, a clinical or an internship. And that is over 150 partners that, you know, Shanita shared that we've been able to do that with. And so we've also gone from one program to 18. And so it is really successful. And we have put on the slide for you, just every year, we're very reflective on where the students' experiences were, what they learned from that, and more importantly, how it did develop their professional skills. So we have really developed this, I mean, it's not really a complicated formula, but we believe adamantly in getting students aware of what exists, exposing them to adults that they don't know and to different environments, business culture, making connections with partners across the board, not just internships. And then letting those connections evolve into insights that students have about different areas within every one of our program areas, and then just opening up those possibilities. And so we just have a list of, the numbering is off, but it is obviously very off. But it's supposed to be eight steps in developing what we really look at as a work-based learning mindset. And so we try to bring our partners in. And I will tell you, last week, we, you may have seen it on our socials, we had an automotive job fair and a welding manufacturing job fair. And so that was over 40 partners who came to the Career Academy. And every one of them really engaged with our students. In fact, we have a high expectation. We ask our partners to be very interactive and with our students so that they have eight minutes at each table to make those connections. It's great to watch. But from that, the students interact, they get to learn about the industry, and then they, they really do, we put the onus on the student to find those placements. And so now the employers from the job fair are emailing and asking for a day that they can come in and interview students. And that launches the whole process. And so we really feel like we have this great system in place. And we have also then on the, the final number four, culmination with possibilities. So students, sometimes students are interested in getting the credential and they don't want the internship. Sometimes students are looking at an apprenticeship or an internship to go right into the workforce. And so if any of you have attended our signing day, I know several of you have, but we have that coming up May 16th. And right now, we're in the process of collecting our students who will be participating in that. So we, last year, we had 78, which was an all-time high that went right into employment. And again, you're looking at 18 different program areas that students were placed local employment. And this year, the top wage earners, we have added a new internship with our CST, which is Central Service Tech. No one really knows what that means, but it's, think of it like central surgical tech. And they do the sterilization process. And we just found out that some of those students, when they pass their certification exam in May, will make $25 an hour before they even graduate. So that's a big win. And the, so our goal at the Career Academy really is to develop that talent pipeline for students who either want to go into, finish their degree or go into the workforce. And we have this, you know, what we do is move students from the classroom out into the authentic work sites. And I asked Devonte today if I could just share his story. And so that picture up in the corner, one of the one through eight in our process is to invite alumni back and really share their story and their journey and what they've learned. And Devonte was the perfect speaker last month because he explained how he met his employer at a job fair. His employer paid for all of his education. He finished his degree. And he works at Precise Manufacturing here in Fort Wayne with John Whitaker. And Devonte was telling the students that he now, he makes a very, very good wage. And he has his own home, he's been out of school for five years, has two cars, his own home, he's just killing it. And I asked him if I could share that story. And I just found out that his younger brother just graduated from the Career Academy last year. They're both Northside students. And he went to our electrical program and then decided to join him in the manufacturing world. And so now his brother is there. And then the icing on the cake with Devonte's story is that he is now applying to be the adjunct professor for students in that program. So we are really hopeful that that pans out. And now I will turn it over to Amelia Fleeger.
Thank you Sandy. Internal and external internships are offered to all of our high schools. Opportunities for students revolve around the 16 career clusters to allow them to explore different career options they may want to pursue the day after graduation. For our external internships, there are different company partnerships around the Fort Wayne area. We work with referrals from current employees and others we may know. We're always looking for great partner companies as we look to expand any type of different external opportunities for students for our internship program out of the College and Career Readiness Department. In addition to external opportunities, students can have internships within Fort Wayne Community Schools. We know that providing these opportunities internally allows all students to have the chance to participate in an internship. Currently, we have students working as classroom assistant interns and special education assistant interns. Both of these positions are of high need in our district and provide students the chance to learn more about what it means to be a teacher and support students. It also creates an interest in teaching and encourages students to explore career in education. Other Fort Wayne Community Schools departments with interns include the Communications Office and the Technology Department. For the fall of 2023, we're recruiting for other internal internships, including internships in the Superintendent's Office, a Health and Wellness Intern, Technology Intern and the College and Career Readiness Intern. Students are made aware of all of the internship options through our Naviance platform. In the platform, students can search for internships based on job interest, career cluster and different inventories that they take around career interests. Students may apply for internships through Naviance and our internship coordinator reaches out to students, works with them to complete applications and set up interviews the prospective intern may qualify for. To assist school buildings in internships, interns may receive credit through the Career Exploration Class delivered online to students with staff from the College and Career Readiness Department. This is, this is being done to streamline the internship program through the College and Career Readiness Department and help schools provide more class choices for students. In the course, students learn about verbal and non-verbal communication, different resume types and how to interview for different positions. Currently, we have 10 internal internships for the spring of 2023. We have worked hard to grow our internal internships to over 50 for the fall of 2023. Here, you can see what departments have elected to have an intern next school year. We're excited about all of these opportunities for our students. And now I will turn it back over to Shanita Bolton.
So the future, how are we going to expand our opportunities for our students? And we will have continuous growth of internships as both Sandy and Amelia have talked about. Many of you have heard and participated with Ford MGL and heard about 3DE. Where we will be growing, the goal is that every student will have a meaningful internship experience prior to graduation, particularly focused on junior and senior year for those students. Also, continue to grow professional skills of students through the Naviance platform, through College and Career Readiness workshops, through their time in their actual classrooms and also one-on-one guidance. Also, having a central location for students to find internships. Prior to this year, we've offered a variety of internships across our district, but there has not been one central location where students can find them. As Amelia shared, we're going to be using the Naviance platform for all internships that are outside of the Career Academy. And then also, we will provide internship showcases. It's really important as our alumni, as some of you are sitting here in this room, to my left and to my right, have gone through and become very seasoned professionals. have gone through and become very seasoned professionals. We need to give back and share about our experiences with students. At this time, we'll take any questions that you might have.
So Naviance, we've been using that, but we're doubling down on that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we are using it. And we actually switched this year for students to be able to search for the internships. Our previous platform counselors could see it, but a student could not search themselves. Now students have access to that.
So are we going to allow training to the kids? Are we going to allow time for them? Is that, I mean, how's that being rolled out to the kids? And then ultimately to the parents as well?
Great question. So through the Naviance platform, as you know, students do have to do lessons in there. Part of that lesson is exploring the internships.
Is that assigned to a specific class?
That is. So they are doing that through their advisor-advisy period currently. And then in regards to parents, Naviance, the platform through technology, they are right now preparing for the parent rollout. And they'll be training for parents, just as we did for Schoology as well.
Will that be rolled out this fall then?
Yes.
Well, kid looking the fall of '23 for their parent, that's probably already done because you signed up for class on that, maybe in the spring of '24?
And they can even actually, we still have some internships that are available for the fall. So they could go to the Naviance platform right now. It is open to all of our high school students, actually middle and high, but it's our high school students then can obtain those internships.
And this is, you said that's all internships excluding the Career Academy?
That's correct.
Does that include the FWCS internships?
Yes.
And then Sandy, you mentioned 78 kids last year participated in the signing day. And all 78 of those kids were going to employment?
Yes.
And then how many, what's our hit rate on kids that come out with a certification or some sort of potentialing from the Career Academy program?
Last year, it was 87%.
87% of those kids got jobs?
No, credential.
Okay, 87% of those got credentials. Of those 87% of kids, how many got jobs? Do you know that?
I don't know that, I don't know it on a percentage. The, we normally have about 350 seniors. Over the last two years, I think that's been about a rough estimate.
And so do most of those kids who get credential go right into the workplace? Or do they go on to other educational opportunities? Or what do you typically see?
So I will tell you that last year, we changed with our structure in terms of leadership. And we used to have an academic counselor on staff. And we replaced that position and added a post-secondary coordinator because we are now, CTE is graded at the state level on our post-secondary placement, both six months and two years out. And we did not have an accurate system in place at the time to really track that. I think across the state, everyone would say the same. And so what we decided to do was to go the route of a post-secondary coordinator and collect that data. So next year, I will be able to tell you with great accuracy where people are. And, but we are really mindful that many students are either going into the military, into the workplace, or finishing. And we're working very well this year with Ivy Tech on, in terms of crossing the finish line. And I will tell you, the certificate, the technical certificate piece is also advancing.
So those 13%, roughly, how many just aren't quite putting in the work? And how many are kind of struggling? You, well, you gave me a great tour. And you mentioned one young lady who just has a language barrier that can do the physical and the, the, physically complete the task, but the test part just struggles.
And that young lady is taking her certification for the fourth time at the end of May. So we are really hopeful that she's going to get it this time. Yeah.
So as you may be aware, Sandy, I know most of our group is. The state senate just came out with their budget and excluded funding for CTE. What does that mean to the program here at Fort Wayne Community Schools? If that were to continue down that path?
Towards internships, I would say that it would not halt our progress whatsoever because we are working with partners in terms of developing those. And it is, it is very much, I always say, each program is as, as strong as the partners that support it. And we have such great local partners to provide these opportunities. So that, I don't, I mean, obviously, it's a threat to the academic success all over. But with internships, I really don't see it as a factor.
So Kathy, what would the senate's budget of line item CTE for us for the programs that Sandy works with and to our kids?
Well, the assumption is that school districts would still fund CTE programs, but out of their education fund instead of using education tuition for pupil funding instead of CTE dollars. So there's a risk there.
Are they raising how much we get in the education fund?
Yes, they are raising how much we get, but...
Proportionately?
Well, it's hard to know because it's buried in that top line. So there's a dollar amount provided and every school district can decide how they want to use those dollars. I mean, it is risky because you could at some point have a superintendent in a different school district say, let's just stop doing CTE and we're going to use those dollars instead for teachers or whatever. So it, it is, it is a risk. I think it's a risky way to do the formula and it should be separated.
And you've educated me that while we believe that Fort Wayne Community Schools CTE funding is very important and very practical and relevant to the kids and there's a demand as proven, it's also very expensive education. Is that a fair and accurate statement?
It is more expensive, yeah, because of the equipment that they need and the expertise that, in the, the staff that are there. And, but CTE dollars are not just earned at the Career Academy there. Also earned at the high schools with the specialty courses that they have at the high school. So really, for our CTE dollars, the bulk of them are coming from the, the high schools. And then, you know, a good number are also coming from the Career Academy. But those, it's, it's important, I think, that compensation is based on the demand and the high demand and high wage of the, of the courses offered. And that incentive is lost once the dollars just go right into the, per pupil funding.
So moving forward, when we see you in a year, you had 334 internships for this calendar year, right? First and second semester?
200. We had 200 students exposed to some form of, 200, I think I said 224.
So what's the goal for next year, 500?
Ultimately, like on a personal level, I would like to see all of our senior students have some level of exposure to partners. I am 100% convinced that partner connections just are game changers for students' future. I have too many stories.
So what's the goal?
100% of seniors.
And how many is that?
Well, I won't know that until enrollment, but it's usually right around. This, the last two years, it's been about 350 of our 920 students. But next year, I do think we will be setting a 10-year record on the number of returning students, which is also something that the state looks at for grading CTE programs. So we're very excited about that, too.
What's that number? I'm going to write this down.
Oh, Steve, okay. I'm going to go on record that we'll have...
If I can find this book, I'm going to come back and refer to it.
Okay, so here's, okay, so here it is. You ready? I think we'll have 430 seniors. And of those 430 seniors, we'll have 390 have some level of exposure to a partner.
You're not going to be able to do this unless Noah gets involved, right?
How many tours do I give Noah next year?
So we can help you and give you some leads and names of business people?
Yes, any partners.
Yeah.
We, yeah, we, one of the things we're really focusing on is just trying to open up within the program areas or the career fields for each program area, showing them how many different directions they can go. So anything from mom-and-pop shops to major corporations.
You know, and I think you have a couple of spokesmen, business people that we saw in the video, Pat Opper. I know she's been a wonderful resource and site for interns. And of course, Tom Kelly. And I think they become your champions.
Kelly already is our champion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm, folks like him can sell other business people on the value of allowing interns into their shop.
Right.
Yeah. Good work.
So if we know of a business, like Steve was asking, who should we have in contact? Or is there somewhere we should direct them to on the web or?
Come on. So if it is CTE-related, you should contact Sandy. If it is anything else outside of that, you should contact our office, Amelia Fleeger, our manager for internships. And then we also have Angela Binge, who is the coordinator that works closely. But they can also, there is on the website, a space for that as well. So please reach out to us. Yes. Under the College and Career Readiness, you'll see backslash internships with that information.
Are many of these internships paid?
I'm going to let you.
Some of our internships are paid, some of them are unpaid. It really just depends on the company and what the needs are for that. Within Fort Wayne Community Schools, internal internships, some of the, some of those are paid and unpaid, depending on need.
What would you say the mix is percentage-wise?
Oh goodness.
It's about 50/50.
And do these internships usually run a semester, the full school year? Or just depends?
It depends. We start out with a semester. Sometimes the opportunity can last longer if the student has built a relationship with the company and their schedule allows for them to do that.
And we also have summer internships as well.
Yes.
And are these internships, some of them during the day, some of them after school?
Both. Some of them are during the day, some of them are after school. It just depends on what may work in the student's schedule, making sure, of course, they've met graduation pathway requirements and such. Next year, though, I think the opportunity will be greater because of the different hours for school. It's going to open the doors for students to have more exposure and more experiences because of our ending time.
So as a junior student, how many credit hours do you have to have had obtained prior to your junior year to be able to look at having an internship during a school day?
Right, the number of credit hours, I'm not for certain about. I just know, like, making sure to have that English, the math, science, and social studies and those requirements so that they're on track. Working with their counselors, they would be able to tell whether or not their schedule would allow for that to occur.
I just heard from a student who's working a regular job, but was super excited about his next year because he did not have to go to school at all in the regular school sense. He was going to go to AmpLab and then he was going to work an internship in the afternoon. And he was incredibly excited. And I'm like, and how are you going to do that? And he had acquired enough credits in his regular and then was able to do econ and government in the summertime, which are requirement for senior. And then his math will be incorporated into the amp. So I think that we're doing tremendous things to fit every child's need. And whatever their ambition is, we're offering that. But like I said, he was like, I don't have to go to school at all. I'm like, well, you have to go to school. But he's like, no. And so he explained and I understood it. But I think that that's tremendous, that we have those opportunities. So he's seeing something unique at Amp and then he's being able to do that internship, too. So that's super great. And I commend you all for contributing to that. And then back on that, Shanita, the Naviance. I think we spoke about this before, but to Noah's point, we talked about being able to track those students afterwards and where they go. And I think that you mentioned in the past, if I heard you correctly, that that will help us. Naviance will help them because they'll still have access to that and we might be able to see further where they're, we're headed after and for years to come.
Yes, Naviance has an alumni component to it. So we can reach students seven years out as well. Of course, now that's always, as long as they keep their information updated. But one of the things that we're doing, and we've actually embedded it in the lesson so seniors have to complete, is that post-secondary journey. So for students, where they're going to college, that's an easy track for us, but we still want them to put that there. If they're employed, listing where they'll be employed at or if they're going into the military, to note that. And that way, not only are we able to communicate with those students because it's not just to get them to the next step, but make sure they're successful that one year post-secondary is we're engaging with them.
So next year at this time, we ought to be able to have a little more idea maybe of where our Anthus students have went and all of our students have...
Absolutely.
Have, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that leads us to board member comments. Steve?
I do not have any.
So I had the privilege of going to, back to Southside last week and spent a couple mornings judging projects. And these were, this was a combination of two math classes, one that Todd Croft taught and one that Leah Morris taught. And so they bring in people from the community to, did you do that also?
I did.
So, but it, you know, again, it's in line with what a lot of our programs are doing through 3DE or AmpLab or, you know, that, that kind of thing where, you know, students have an opportunity to create a presentation and present it to adults that they've possibly never met before. And so it's a really good experience for them. And, and these kids had the, so I did it two different days. So they had the, they could possibly get denied and have to go again. Or they could choose upon hearing their feedback to go, to go again. So I actually, since I did it two different days, that second day, there was one group that just said, well, we think we knew better. And so, so they decided to re-present. But it was really, it was, first of all, it was a fun day and met some other interesting judges. But just nice to do something like that, connect with kids and see what they're doing. So as Noah already mentioned, something about the budget. So this is, this is it. This is the last week of the session, right? And so the bud, the state budget is being finalized, possibly as we speak. There are big, big differences between the senate and the house version. So they've got to come together and decide what they're going to do. Some big differences in K-12 funding. To me, when I looked at the senate budget, there were no losers. The house budget seemed to be a little bit different that way. But big difference on career and technical education funding. The senate, I think, just said, it's there in your general fund and, you know, you distribute that as you see fit. The house did the same thing with textbook fees. The house said, well, your schools are just going to have to pay for textbook fees now. Senate had it as a separate item, I think. So those are two, yeah, little bit, okay, tiny bit. So but those things had to be worked out. But of course, the big one, and Jennifer had a wonderful letter to the editor. Was it Saturday? Yeah. About the proposed expansion of the voucher program. And that's in the house budget, not at all in the senate budget. So who knows what's going to work out. But I'll, I'll let Jennifer talk about, more about vouchers. And if you're really concerned with, you know, what she has to say, write your senator and representative.
Thank you. I guess I'll pick up on that one then. Thank you, Julie. I am concerned, my, my general letter was about voucher growth and reaching new students. When the voucher was implemented way back in 2010, 11, students who qualified the free and reduced lunch, they were qualifying at a $45,000 annual income, which made the, our government paying roughly $54 million that year in vouchers. It was on the premise of getting children out of poor schools or, or poor children out of bad schools, which I sincerely do not believe we have any bad schools in public education. We just need resources to provide for those students. So my letter basically was just telling you to please pay attention to the, a lot of people are headline readers and headlines say great things. We're going to contribute, you know, roughly $2 billion to the K-12 funding, which sounds fabulous. We're also going to pay for your textbooks, parents, that we don't, you know, that haven't been paid because we're one in four states who don't pay for textbooks. But then you look closely and you don't see a line item for those textbooks, which means that money then has to come out of our operational fund, which means that money comes out of resources for our children. So what the house bu, house bill 1001 budget bill, and Julie was saying there are huge differences. The thing we need to pay attention and watch is The thing we need to pay attention and watch is that two billion dollar increase is going to ten per, a lot of it is going, one-third of it is going to earmark for ten percent of our students who attend schools in Indiana. So that is raising the voucher level to a qualification of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, and over four-hundred percent of the free and reduced lunch, um, qualification, which takes twenty-twenty-four vouchers from expenditure would be five-hundred million dollars, and in twenty-twenty-five, six-hundred million dollars to our voucher students. I personally just feel that when we have ninety percent of our students attending public schools, earmarking one-third of the two billion dollars to go to voucher schools is unacceptable.
And to be clear, Jennifer, isn't, isn't it that one-fifty to two-hundred-and-twenty-five gap? Ten percent of statewide kids go to voucher schools or private schools, but this five-hundred million and six-hundred million is only for that grouping of people between one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars roughly?
Absolutely. And what I did is a little whiteboard study, or I'm still working on it, but what I found is voucher enrollment, student enrollment, has not been increasing in our schools who take vouchers. So it's pretty stagnant, which to me means-
Private school enrollment.
Private school enrollment, parochial school enrollment, their, their enrollment is stagnant. So that doesn't mean, that means no new student enrollment is using those vouchers. So we are supporting those families who had intended to send those children to schools. And like I said at the beginning, I don't believe that we have any schools who are failing. I feel that we are being shorted resources, and we can do better with more resources. So if you wanna look back at the full article, where I was probably a little more eloquent in stating that, where I have a chance to write it, um, that was Saturday. But all I am doing is encouraging people to look at headlines and then inform yourself what those are really telling you, because they're not always telling you the full story. Oh, but I did, I, on a positive note, because I do feel something. Um, I did my last JA of the year, JA in a Day with the, um, Whitney Young Preschool on Friday, which if you have a chance, community members, please sign up for a JA in a Day. It's not a very long commitment, and I've done multiples this year because it is very rewarding to see our students in the classroom and working with them, and then the teacher as well. But I kind of wondered how my JA in a Day would go with my pre-K, but honestly, I'll sign back up for pre-K. Those kids were fabulous and were eager learners and wanted to learn everything you wanted to tell them about that day, and I would've spent more time with them. So my encourage, my word of advice is to go out, um, and sign up for JA. If it's not this year, there'll be plenty of opportunities next year, and I encourage you to do so. And that's it. Thank you.
I just was on Facebook this morning and saw that, um, there is the First Annual Pioneer Starts Here event and award ceremony at the Forum of Electric Works. Um, and says, "Join us for the First Annual Pioneer Starts Here event," in the forum. This will launch their new Pioneer Starts Here platform, and they will award the first ever, ever Pioneer Award, and one of their, their four nominees, and one of them is our own Riley Johnson, um, from Amp Lab. And the catch is that all the voting takes place at the event. So I encourage everybody to go so Riley can win. Right now, I'm the only person going according to Facebook, so he'll win if it's just me.
And it looks like a great community event. There's live music and-
Electric Works.
-food. It's at our new Electric Works, and I believe it's a free event, so-
Yep.
If you wanna do something on Thursday night, that looks like a great event to go to.
Sign up on Eventbrite and, um, then go to the event so you can vote for Riley.
That's great. I love that. I, too, was able to go to Southside. That was an awesome experience. I just wanna thank Mr. Croft and Ms. Morris for giving me a tour afterwards so that I could see how these student projects have begin, have begun to beautify the campus at Southside. So just great. I just love Southside every time I go. Good job, Riley. Yeah, I just love that whole environment when I'm there. So, um, I just wanna remind the community that we are having community meetings. They begin tomorrow, um, for information about the Health and Safety Referendum. So those, uh, start tomorrow at Northside in the PL Room. Um, normally they have a person standing out in the field waving you, um, into that room. Um, but from six to eight at Northside, and then Thursday, May fourth, from six to eight in the Southside Cafeteria. Wednesday, May seventeenth, six to eight in the Snyder Cafeteria. Tuesday, May twenty-third, six to eight, uh, North Rep Cafeteria. And then Monday, June fifth, one to three P.M., um, at the Wayne, um, slash New Tech Cafeteria. So wanna encourage-
And those community me, meetings are about?
The health, the wellness and safety referendum.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't mention that, but yeah. Okay. So yes, so we'll be getting community input on our plan, um, and so we wanna encourage all of our community members to come out, um, so that we can hear your voice and you can offer your opinion. I, like many of my colleagues, read all of those, um, comments, so, um, we're always interested in hearing what you have to say. So, that's what I had. Oh, sorry. I, yep, uh-huh. I mixed it all up today. Keep everybody on your toes.
I also went to Southside, uh, was invited by, uh, Mr. Croft and Ms. Morris. It was a great experience. One of the things that I really enjoy, and I think Dr. Daniel speaks to this all the time, is just how well our students do in situations like this. The teacher shared that there was one, um, young lady who was in a group who had done it the previous year and how she was completely quiet. She wouldn't talk, but this year, when she came in, she actually led the group, and she was so much more confident. So just hearing stories like this, boosting of the confidence and the experience that we're able to give our students is, is just amazing to see.
So following up on some of the things, to be clear what Jennifer said, there's only less than ten percent of the students in the whole state that go to private schools. And again, the funding of five to six hundred million, Tom, about, is probably two to three percent of those kids already go. Following up what Julie said, per the Indiana Capital Chronicle, which is a great resource, and they just were recently awarded, um, a number of awards for journalism, this past year, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand kids of high school age or sixty-five percent participated in CTE programming. That was at a new high of almost a hundred-and-eighty million dollars. And by taking this out as a line item, we appreciate Senator, um, Michler in the Senate to, um, give us the flexibility and freedom to use that money, but certainly would be nice to just fund the schools properly and then still have the CTE set aside. I think that's valuable and important, so just a couple follow-up on those two items. I'd like to congratulate Ashley Saboda, sitting in here. Um, she recently, as well, won an award Friday for her series on diversity, equity, inclusion that I think took place, and I remember you commenting about it-
Right.
-last fall.
Yep.
Very timely is what's going on in the community and the world, and so, uh, and thank you for all your tireless efforts, too. I know you get paid, but it's probably not a lot to, to work and cover the schools and, and what you do for, uh, on behalf of Allen County and the Journal Gazette and the school areas. Um, the other thing, it's been a month or so since we met, uh, pre-spring break, and there's been a lot of tragic events throughout the nation. Many times, uh, thoughts and prayers are offered. I never wanna discourage thoughts and prayers. I always wanna encourage that, but there are times when other actions could be taken, more than just thoughts and prayers. Uh, this morning while I woke up, I, I went to Twitter, which I don't regularly do, but happened to, and I noticed an article by a local journalist, um, about a student named Orain Bragg at Wayne. I didn't know who Orain was. I got to see, uh, Snyder play Wayne. Uh, one of the things, as a side note, sitting in this role is Riley's a Southside girl, Maria's Almhurst, Anne's Northside, you know, Julie was Snyder back in the day, as well as Jennifer and I, so we all have our heritage and our kind of allegiances, but sitting in this role, you learn to cheer on the whole district. And so Orain Bragg, I'm gonna ask for the community to give him your prayers and thoughts. He was a student at Wayne and played basketball as a freshman. Thought he was injured throughout the season and played off and on throughout the year, but was recently diagnosed with leukemia. So, um, there's an article on the twenty-one I saw, uh, and I think also on Wayne dot com, and I'm sure there'll be something in the Journal Gazette. Sounds, looks like a great young man. Really, Coach Pickens talked about him, uh, in the article, and sort of one of the assistant coaches, and so just a really tragic, uh, situation for him. So please keep Orain Bragg in your thoughts and prayers. That's all I have.
Thanks, Noah. Dr. Daniel.
So many great things happening, and again, appreciate our board participating with our students, with our teachers, and the appreciation for what we do on a daily basis. The whole CTE phenomenon, I'll just say, it sort of plateaus our movement going forward, and it presents, hmm, it prevents incentivizing, and we would like to have, as we are definitely heading down this road. And to do so, I met with Tom Kelly this morning, and we had this discussion, and he understood, and hopefully we're making some contacts that will say this, give us a chance to ramp this up. So by that, if you wanna create pilots, do so. But to move it entirely across the, the state, uh, and I even talked with, uh, Dr. Jenner, uh, later on this afternoon. And I think we're seeing some movement there. So let's, uh, keep that, um, discussion happening. But you hear what's happening in the CTE space, and I wanna congratulate, uh, our team as we're looking to expand internships, both through the Career Academy, ANTHAS Career Academy, but also within each, each of our buildings. And I think our ultimate goal would be, how do a hundred percent of our graduates have some type of work-based learning experience? Again, it's not always external. It's also internal. So you saw, uh, my willingness to say, hey, if you wanna intern with the superintendent, if you're thinking about CEO-type settings, please do so. That will be a semester, and I'll not be around. But there are a lot of things that happen in, i-if you are thinking about strategic planning and thinking how you work with boards and thinking, and I think that kind of exposure at this age can set a person on the path to, do I real, what do I want to do in my post-secondary life, or in my post-secondary life? So, um, huge, in my opinion. Tom Kelly was very excited. He's had thirteen of our interns, of which he's hiring eleven. So, um, and I think Sandy, I know she's not here, but give her kudos because that's where, that's where they connect, and he says they're high quality. So that's wonderful. But just think of all the areas that we're trying to target as we move down the path of our connecting in our career clusters on some vertical alignment into really three major areas. One is health services, or health science and human services. You can throw a lot of themes underneath that umbrella, and that's the idea. But also, what about manufacturing, engineering, and trades? Just think of all the occupations that flow through there. And then finally, what are we doing in the area of business, uh, technology? And we've also sort of landed on fine arts, because those are very important as well. So I think we've really struck a chord for each and every one of our students in their interest area. Now you have to start mapping out what are the sequence of courses, and again, looking at really three levels. A basic level, I'll just use this, this as an example. A basic level would be a student graduating with a CNA credential. Okay, probably fifteen, maybe dual credits involved there, but how do we move that up to an intermediate, which may be thirty credits in that particular area? So now they've branched off and are earning additional credits, but what about that particular student who wants to really focus on this? Maybe we have some scholarships through Ivy Tech, through maybe Parkview, that that student starts as an eighth grader, finishes as a twelfth grader with a C, with an RN. These are specific, high-demand, high-salary positions that our community is absolutely in dire need of. So therefore, that, that gives you an example of where we're heading, and the thinking and the processing and developing this is occurring right now. So Steve, five years. Five years, the goal would be, how do we truly have a hundred percent of our kids in some type of work-based learning experience? How do we open up internships? How do we open up sequence of courses? Because we got, we have to drive down the cost of students coming to our career, our ANTHAS Career Center. That's a very costly proposition. So we can't do that with our current system in place. We have, we have to ask for private investment, companies who are willing to provide pro-bono instructors or a connection with instructors so we can make this happen. So that's where we're, we're mapping all that out right now. But I can tell you, as you just spoke, you see what's happening in our 3D environment when we have students starting to present professional presentations as freshmen, what happens when they're going to be seniors? And like Julie said, wow, they start to ramp up. Confidence level starts going this direction, and quite frankly, I, I would love to see how can we connect with these kids to get them into the School of Ed, get them into our buildings as future teachers, selfishly from our part. Oh, by the way, that would be underneath what?
Human services.
Human services. So we have those ideas and starting to mapping out, and I, I cannot tell you how, what I heard today with the CTE piece, you folks are starting to, it, it is becoming a reality. So I can just say, hey, five years, five years. Let's see where we are in five years. So you have to be around five years from now, too. I'm not sure about that. Okay. Gotta be here.
And you have to keep track of that notebook for five years.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, that's funny. Okay, so we're, um, ready to adjourn. Let me see. Our next board meeting will be Monday, May eighth, and we'll see you all then.
Move for adjournment.
Suck it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.